Ready? A very happy good afternoon to everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Laloie. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Mayor Protem Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Present.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. Councilmember Laloie, you're up there all alone, but not for long. May we begin tonight's proceedings? I would ask Councilmember Valenzuela to please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Niisnan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwan Windtoon peoples, and the people of the Wiltun Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Now, for the pledge of allegiance, please salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under a law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, a very good afternoon to all of you. Everyone here is a special guest, but I want to especially welcome some of our elected officials who have joined us this evening. Two esteemed state senators, one, our newly sworn-in state senator, who knows her way around City Hall a little bit, and Senator Richard Pan, who just retired. I see, and if I forget someone, please raise your hand, because I hope I caught every one. But two of our region's finest mayors, in fact, maybe the finest mayors. Mayors Bobby Singh Allen from El Grove and Martha Guerrero from West Sacramento are here. Welcome here. Did I miss any elected official? Who is that? Councilmember Dante Early. I said Martha. I said it. I said, "Mayors Bobby Singh Allen and Martha Guerrero." Should I say it a third time?
I got lost in the applause.
Councilmember Early is here. Welcome to you, Dante Early. So, this is a special evening, an evening of new beginnings. And I want to just make this opening remark. In addition to congratulating all of the new members, who we will swear in and welcome in just a moment, but to your families, to your friends, to your many supporters, to all those who believe in you, this will be a memorable evening. And some may say, and they might not be wrong, that this might be the best evening of your tenure. But you know what? But you know what? That's a little bit of a kind of a cliche truism, but you know what? It's actually not true. Because the even better days and evenings will be on all those occasions where you have done something with your public service that benefits people, that helps somebody who may desperately need help, that helps a community realize its dream for a better park, that achieves something significant, not just for your district, but for your entire city. You won't have just one greatest day of your tenure. I know all of you, you are going to have many great days in your tenure because of what you're going to achieve on behalf of your districts and on behalf of the city that we all love. And this is a really happy night. And we're going to celebrate you, we're going to hear from you, and you're going to get the opportunity to thank all those who helped brought you here. So, let's give you all a round of applause. We are going to be, the way we, I think, are going to do this, we've debated exactly how to do it, but I think we will swear in, of course, one member at a time, and we're going to go in reverse order. And then what we will do is ask the new members and the returning member to take their seats. And then we will give each of the new members an opportunity to speak to your family, friends, and supporters. And yes, you can take more than two minutes. And then each of us, you know, will go around and welcome you individually and collectively, if that's okay. So, let us begin with our returning friend, outstanding leader, Councilmember Rick Jennings. I'd like to welcome Pastor Kenneth Reese, and of course, Rick's family and friends, led by his wife, community leader Cassandra Jennings, Cassandra's mom, and others. Welcome. All of you. Yes.
I love it. You brought the village. That's the way I do it.
Repeat after me. I, Rick Jennings.
I, Rick Jennings.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Amen.
Amen.
So, I'll tell you what. Why don't, if everyone gathers here, we can take one photo now, so that we can have individual photos with each of the newly sworn-in members, and we'll stand here behind. I think that's... Never gets old. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you so much. Councilmember Jennings, I think, has signed his oath. You're now good for four years. There you go. And now it is time to welcome newly-elected District 5 Councilmember Katie Maple to be sworn in by our friend Rochelle Ditmore from the City of Refuge. Yay! Everybody up here.
Do you want to give that to the member?
Right here.
Oh, yeah. I've been doing it each person. I got you.
I, Katie Maple, do solemnly swear.
I, Katie Maple, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well.
Well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Councilmember, Councilmember Maple, your seat is no longer out there. It's right up here. Please come up. Come on. All right. Let us now, as Councilmember Maple takes her seat, right here, the District 5 seat, let us now welcome District 3 Councilmember-elect Karina Talamontes to be sworn in by Senator Angelique Ashby and Sacramento Federation Leader Fabrizio Sasso. Welcome.
Hey, Karina, you ready? Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Karina Talamontes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Support and defend.
Support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well.
Well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Let's all take, let's all take a picture. Here we go. Congrats. Hi, Alec. How you doing, Alec? Good to see you, man. Here we go. Look at this. It's a paparazzi. Oh, my God.
I'm going to stand on my toes this one again.
I'm a little worried about our after party. I think we might be on capacity.
Your party's together, right?
Yeah.
It's good to see you, brothers.
Hey, how are you? Good to see you.
Councilmember Talamontes. Please, please, please. As Councilmember Talamontes takes her seat, let's give her one more big hand here. And, and, let's get everyone to sit down here, please. Thank you. And last but not least, Councilmember-elect from District 1.
Let's go.
Lisa Kaplan, to be sworn in by her mom, Kathy Kaplan. And family and friends.
Want to give it to Lisa?
Raise your right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Lisa Kaplan.
I, Lisa Kaplan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Purpose of evasion.
Purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well.
Well.
And faithfully.
Faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Yay!
If I stand up here and cry now?
All right. Photo time, Lisa.
Stick my head in here.
Now, you can put that on the dice.
Thank you.
Congratulations, no shame.
There's your seat.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have just seated a majority-woman city council in Sacramento. Progress is possible, and it's demonstrated here tonight. Next, we want to hear from the new council members, but why don't we start with the returning council member? And let's go in the same order here, so that Councilmember Kaplan can get seated. And then, the floor is yours, and then your colleagues want to congratulate you as well. Rick?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, they say the third time is the charm. And I'm really pleased to be here tonight. And I just want to start for a second and stop for a second and thank my pastor, Kenneth Reese, for administering the oath of office for me this evening. Please give him a round of applause, if you will. Many of you know my pastor, Pastor Emeritus Dr. Ephraim Williams of the St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church, who administered the oath of office to me for the last two times in 2014 and 2018. I just want to acknowledge him. His support for me and this city over the years cannot be measured. And I just want to acknowledge him and thank him for administering that oath of office to me. I also want to let you know that Pastor Reese has stepped right in at St. Paul. And again, I want to express my gratitude to him and his wife and family. Speaking of family, my family is here. My wife of 44 years, my mother-in-law, my nephew and his wife, William Mercery and his wife, Cassandra, my immediate family, my blood family, they're here with me as well, here in California. And I got a lot of family over there, as you saw when they came up. But I want to thank my family, who has always, I say always, been there for me every step of the way. There are thousands of peoples, people and their communities that believed in me and trusted that I would represent them as their council member. They did it in 2014, they did it in 2018, and they did it again in 2022. For this, I say thank you. I want you to know that I don't take my responsibilities lightly. I know I still have purpose. I know there's a lot more work that we need to do on this council, in this city, and in all of the communities that I will represent, especially after tonight. With redistricting, I have to say goodbye to some of those communities that we've served over the last eight years, communities like Valley High, Detroit Boulevard, Delta Shores. But don't worry, they will always have me as a representative. And my desk partner, My Vang, Councilmember My Vang, she is now representing those communities, and I know they will be served well, no question in my mind. But I just want to let those communities know that I love them, and I loved all the work that we did as we went through the trenches to make those communities better. And we did make it better, and it will continue to get better, especially with Councilmember Vang and I working together in those specific communities. I want to make sure that you understand that my commitment will never go away just because I'm the kind of person that when I decide I want to serve, I want to make sure that I serve the entire community, whether it's mine or not. I'm a representative for the city of Sacramento. I want to make sure everybody understands that I am here to serve. I am your community servant for the city of Sacramento. To the new areas, Land Park, Curtis Park, Southland Park, Upper Land Park, Zeeburg Park, and Little Pocket, that finally I get to represent, I could not be more honored to represent them. While I know I have big shoes to fill, I follow that every day that we have an opportunity to build upon the great work that has been done for so many years by those council members who served those areas in the past. I know I have those big shoes to fill, and I am willing to make it happen. And then there's my Pocket Greenhaven area that I have been involved with since 1986. They have always been supportive of me. We moved to Sacramento, as I said, in 1986. It's a place where we lived, it's a place where our kids went to school, it's a place where I coached Little League baseball and soccer. It's a place that I love with all my heart and soul. And I just want to thank them for their unwavering trust and support and always holding my feet to the fire. When I look at the teams that I've been able to work with doing my service on the council, I can't help but say teamwork makes the dream work. In 2014, the team was led by Mayor Kevin Johnson. And that included two retiring colleagues, Senator Angelique Ashby and former Councilmember Jay Shonier. Then in 2016, under the leadership of our current mayor, we continued to press through the tragedies and trials, and we triumphed in almost everything that we did. We continued to make triumph, including a worldwide pandemic. That was the right team for the right time at that time, and I want to thank them personally for all their hard work, dedication, and commitment for everything that we accomplished together. Our city and our JPA leadership and staffs have been exceptional. I suggest that you give them a big round of applause. They do the hard work every single day, day in and day out, to make our city work, and they do it well. I especially want to thank my D-7 staff, Henry Atkinson, Diane, Dennis, and our intern, Cleveland DeLuce. Cleveland is graduating from the University of Davis, California, sometime real soon, Cleve, right? Where are you? There you go. He's getting ready to graduate. So, please, help him and give him some love as he graduates and he finds his way. I want to say that Dennis should get a special award, having been with me ever since I started this journey in 2014. He has been my chief of staff, and he's just been an incredible confidant, brother, friend, someone that I could always count on. So, Dennis, thank you so much. I want to thank the current council members that are still here with us, Eric Guerra, Sean Laloie, Mayor Steinberg, for the work and the accomplishments that we've achieved together. I want to thank my new colleagues and congratulate them, Lisa Kaplan, Karina Talamontes, and Katie Maple. I look forward to getting to know each of you better. I look forward to the work we're going to do together. I am confident that we will do great things as we move this city forward. I look forward to working with all of you in building Team 2022 and beyond, a Sacramento City Council that includes inclusiveness, serving the least among us, keeping our city safe, supporting small and large business, and making sure that Sacramento is a city for all. In closing, my grandmother used to sing a song by Reverend James Cleveland. Now, if you know me, I really can sing. But that song really expresses how I feel about where I am in my career here at the city of Sacramento, starting to serve my third term. And I want to let you know that I don't feel no way back. I've come too far from where I started from. Nobody told me the road would be easy, but I don't believe he brought me this far to leave me. No. So, just in closing, thank you, Sacramento, for supporting a kid from Washington, DC, who came to California. who came to California to reach a dream. And that dream has now been in the focus of the city of Sacramento. And I live my dream every single day because I love this city, I love the people, and I love everything about what we do every day to make it better for all of us. So thank you so much for your undying support.
Welcome back, Rick Jennings. Madam, did we tell all the new council members that singing was a required part of the swearing-in speech? Councilmember Katie Maple, welcome to you. The floor is yours.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Thank you. Well, I will say that I will never subject you to my singing. But grateful to have Councilmember Jennings next to me, and that was beautiful. Thank you for sharing that. I want to start off by saying just gratitude. That's what I feel right now. That's what I felt on the campaign trail. For most of you, you know, it was two whole years, wore out many pairs of shoes, knocked on thousands of doors, talked to thousands of people. And, you know, the immense gratitude and sense of responsibility that I feel weighs on me heavily, but with a lightness because I feel ready to serve the community. And so I would be remiss if I didn't thank a few people. I will not be able to thank everyone, and I won't subject people to that. But I do want to start out by thanking Senator Ashby, who has been a mentor to me for years, who was one of the first people to call me and say, "I think you should think about running for office someday." And then she said it again and again and again and again, until finally I said, "Yes." And so without you, I would not be here. I also want to thank my campaign team, Jeff Russay out here, campaign manager, Marcus Wolf, Ryan Brown and Marva Diaz. Those are the people that, you know, for those of us who are up here, campaigns are hard, and they take people behind the scenes to make it work. And so without those people who gave their time, their energy, their everything to it along with me, we would not be here. Of course, my family, who's here with me today, my dad, my mom, my grandmother, my partner Sam, who had to deal with a lot. And most importantly, the District 5 community, every single person who opened their door to me, who took a phone call, who was willing to sit and talk with me, who we had difficult conversations with, even if we didn't agree, who were willing to sit with me and hear me and see where we were coming from. So I carry all of these people with me every single day. I want to, like I said, I hold this with great responsibility. And we have a lot of challenges to face, too. We know that we face housing affordability, that we face homelessness, we face inequality and violence in our communities, just among a few of the things that we have before us. But I firmly believe that we can face all of these by working together. I'm so grateful to be alongside greats here to work on these issues. But most importantly, putting people first. So one thing that I hold with me is the workers of District 5. I'd also would not be here without the Central Labor Council and all of the unions that supported me. I am a worker myself. I'm a member of the California Teachers Association. And that's who I carry with me on this dais. And everywhere I go, we put people first. And so I'll keep it brief, but I'm looking forward to getting to work. Thank you so much.
Great, great words. Thank you. Councilmember Karina Talamontes, welcome to you.
Okay, all right. So I talk loud, but I have a mic in front of me, so I will keep my voice down. And I'll talk slowly because sometimes I talk so fast. And so, here we go. I'm honored to have a seat on this dais. And thank you to everyone who helped me get here. And I have so many people to thank. So bear with me for a few minutes because it truly takes an army of supporters, family, and friends to arrive to a moment like this. First, to my family, my mom, Magdalena, Olga, Mike, Diana, Rochelle, my godson, Mark, my mom, Alicia, right here, and my dad, Rajinardo, who's watching me from above. Thank you for believing me and supporting me every moment of my life. I'm the proud daughter of immigrants. My siblings and I were raised in a humble home. We did not have material things. We were rich, but we were and are still rich in love. It is particularly meaningful honor for me to represent one of Sacramento's most culturally rich and vibrant Latino corridors. This is a full-circle moment for me. Second, to every person who walked precincts, wrote campaign contributions, made phone calls, or marked my name on your ballot, you were and still are Team Talamontes. Please stand so I can acknowledge you. Stay standing for a second. The best team in the city. Thank you for pouring your hearts, time, and resources into this effort. We did it. We are here, and we have a seat at the table. To the team that led my campaign and to my work family here at City Hall, I see you, Maisha and Andre and Deb. Thank you, thank you, and you're irreplaceable. Thank you for your love and encouragement. To my partner, Fabrizio, thank you for listening to me talk and talk and talk and for always recentering on what's important, the opportunity to serve. You walked every step of the journey by my side, and I'm grateful. To my colleagues on this dais, thank you for supporting me, each and every single one of you. Helped me along the way, and I'm honored and looking forward to the years to come on working on the tough issues ahead of us. I know what it takes to be successful in this chamber. I watched my former boss and current senator give her all to the city for the past five years. And what incredibly humbling honor to have three senators here today, current senator and my mentor, Angelique Ashby, as well as Sacramento champions, Dr. Pan and Mayor Darrell Steinberg. Thank you, all three of you, for being here. But also thank you for pouring your support into me and giving me all the encouragement imaginable. I'm particularly proud to be a member of this council as women regain majority representation for the first time for decades here at City Hall. A special thank you to Mayor Heather Fargo and Angelique Ashby for taking me under your wing. Thank you. Finally, and most importantly, I would not be here today but for the support of one group, the people of Natomas, Garland, and Northgate. Thank you for choosing me, for giving me this incredible opportunity. I promise to give you my best. I will carry with me all those conversations that we had at the doors or at meet and greets. We have a lot of work ahead of us. We need to find a way to make Sacramento more affordable. People are struggling financially and living paycheck to paycheck. We need to do better on housing, homelessness, transportation, public safety, and investing in our neighborhoods. Those are the concerns of District 3, and I'm committed to working hard for the people of Sacramento. Now, I'm going to say something in Spanish, and I'll wrap it up. A mi comunidad de Northgate, Garland, y Natomas, muchas gracias por darme esta oportunidad de servir nuestra comunidad y estar aquí en el municipal de Sacramento. Te prometo trabajar duro cada día de mi vida para mejorar nuestra comunidad. Y en los días que vienen, por favor mándame un mensaje, encuentrenme en las redes sociales y aquí comunicarnos porque todos juntos vamos a poder mejorar nuestra comunidad. Y otra vez, muchas gracias del fondo de mi corazón. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Councilmember Lisa Kaplan.
First, I want to say ditto to all my colleagues who have spoken before me. Each word that you've said holds true, not just for your district, but my district and for the city of Sacramento. I know that we, we will lead this city. We will work together. And I'm honored to sit up here on this dais with all of you. We all know we don't get here alone. My biggest champion has been my mother. And I learned the gift of public service from her. We lived in a small town, Kaiser, Oregon, across the street from the elementary school. If my mother did not take care of you in her daycare, she did, would you always find your way into the backyard? When I left for high school, friends rented our rooms out of our house. My mom was the mom to everybody. She led with her heart. And that's the gift she gave me, not to mention, man, give her a list of seniors to call, and she can convince every single one of them. Mom, thank you. Thank you for being a mom. I am blessed you're my mom. But thank you for having a heart for so many others. And I wouldn't do this without my family. I have served as an Natomas school board member for 20 years. I love our community. I love our scholars. I love our kids. And when, one of the first people I ever met then, Bobby Singh, before she became Bobby Singh Allen, before she became mayor, I will use the word hounded, harassed, called. And since you have to run for city council, you have to. But that would not have been a yes without my husband, BG. And that would have not been a yes but for my daughters, Viva and Asha, because they had a say in it, too. Thank you, girls. It is never an "I" that gets here, but a "we." Garland Rosaro, who helped me become a school board member over 20 years ago, who learned the trade from Willie Brown. Darrell Steinberg, when I was a staffer, and you were our Assembly Member and Senator. Eric, when we were staffed together in the Capitol. Rick, when we were school board members. My, school board members. Karina, members together. Katie, Katie, we have relationships. We don't get this alone. And it's through everybody's shoulders I stand on. And I like to say, I live by the G's. Grit got me here. Grace, live by it. Gift, public service is a gift. Never forget that. Grateful, be grateful for every moment you have. You never know when it's your last. And serve with gratefulness and gratitude. Make sure you spread it. Spread that grateful, gratitude, grace because that's what we do when we serve. We serve for the greater good to lift everyone up. And then that what has driven me for 20 years as a public servant, as a school board member, and now as your council member. Because I know the time I have here is a gift. It is a gift and my duty to serve our community and lift all of us up. We can all go up together, and we must do more for the least among us. That is my pledge. Thank you. And for the ladies in the region, I am so honored because we got Senator Ashby. We got Dante. We got Mayor Martha Guerrero, Mayor Bobby Singh Allen. We've got the entire city council of West Sac, that is ladies. So gentlemen, hold on because the ladies are going to leave.
So, you know, really eloquence from all of our new members. Thank you. Why don't we go around the dais and allow some of those who haven't had a chance to speak to welcome our returning colleague and our new colleagues. I have some words, but I'm going to speak last. So Councilmember Vang, why don't we start with you?
Right, I'll keep it short because I know there's a party after this, and folks want to get to that. So Councilmember Jennings, it's been such an honor sitting next to you for the past two years. Actually, I call you Coach Jennings, really. But you've been an incredible mentor, and I'm just so grateful that you're continuing your public service for the city of Sacramento. It's just been awesome working with you closely in the Valley High area. And I hope that I don't disappoint you. And I'm going to do my best, all heart and hustle, to represent the community that you've been fighting for for so many years. And so just grateful that the voters selected you again and you stepping up and always making sure that, you know, you center community first. And so I look forward to working with you and also just sitting next to you because it's been quite a ride just the past two years, serving alongside you. Katie, congratulations, Councilwoman Katie Maple. I love Oak Park because I also grew up and met of you in Oak Park. And I'm just so thrilled that they're going to have an advocate like you fighting for them, especially for communities that are often left behind in the Oak Park area. I know that you are incredibly progressive, and I look forward to working with you to move this council in a way that can have progressive change. And so I'm really excited to work with you. I know that we have some overlap areas as well. The Parkway area, for example, north of Mack Road as well. And really looking forward to you to make sure that we continue to center communities that are often not at the table, communities that are often ignored by government entities. And so really excited to work with you. Councilwoman Talamontes, when I was elected to city council, I said I was bringing everybody with me. I literally meant it. So I'm so excited that you're here. My sister, my partner in crime. I'm just so grateful that I get the opportunity, not just to work with you. When I was a councilwoman, you were a staff for now Senator Ashby, but now we're colleagues. And we've been fighting the fight anyways, but it's just so amazing to be able to sit on the dais with you and to continue that good fight, really, for the people of Sacramento. And so I'm excited because we do talk fast, and we have a lot of energy. And it's what Sacramento needs, right? Bold, fresh, new voices, right? So... And it's not because we're nervous while we're talking fast because we just have a lot to say. We have a lot to say, that's why. But I look forward to working with you and really changing the trajectory of the city of Sacramento along with Councilwoman Valenzuela and Councilwoman Maple. Lisa, Councilwoman Kaplan, I am really, really excited to work with you. I remember when I was just a community organizer with HIP, MoN Innovating Politics. And I remember coming out to walk for school board members. And when you were running for reelection, I remember coming out and meeting you at one of the union halls. That was really my first interaction with you and have always been just really admiring you from a distant as a community organizer. And then I was on school board and then city council. And now I'm like, oh, snaps, I get to work with Lisa Kaplan on the council. And so I'm just really excited. A lot of new energy on this council. And yeah, female majority, and I look forward to working with you. You have a lot of experience in government. Your 20 years on Natomas. I think you're going to bring a lot of governance, a lot of best practice in terms of governance to the city council as well. And so really looking forward to working with you. And then just to my entire colleagues, everyone, I think this is really exciting time for the city of Sacramento, a female majority, which is really exciting. And Mayor, you know, all the progressive things that you've been wanting to do, this is your council right here, Mayor. I'm saying right now. So you want to get things done, you got the council to do it right now. So I'm just going to say that, and I'm going to close it. And congratulations. Congratulations, everyone. I'm excited. I'm super excited.
I'm excited, too. Love it. Okay. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'll keep it short here. To my colleague, my seatmate here for the last eight years. You know, Rick, you're the dean of the council now. And I've appreciated coming in and sitting down and learning with you on many of these issues and excited about the continued work we're going to do, particularly when it comes to the challenges that some of our youth face, some of the issues on gang prevention, intervention, and particularly the issue of gun violence. You've been a stalwart for that issue and I look forward to the many years of targeting those difficult issues. Thank you for your years of service. You went through it through the school board, decided to do it again. And then you decided to do it again for another term. So, but thank you. To, you know, my colleague, Katie Maple, you know, my new colleague. You know, I've watched you... watched you since your young Democrat days and then also as a professional in, in our both professional careers, you know, and I've appreciated your work, your tact and some of that. And I'm, I'm looking forward to a partner here in our community. We, we share a, a long stretch of, of boundaries in an area of Stockton Boulevard in South Sacramento that, that really needs a lot of attention. And I'm, I'm excited about the ability for us to make some change and continue the good work that we've done there as well. I know you're committed to it and excited for that great work. To Karina Talamontes, our, our new council member, I still recall the Marcos Bretton article, what, what did they put in her cornflakes? You know? And, and, and true, all of us wanted whatever that was, like to get a little, just a little bit of that, because of your energy, your optimism, and, and that, that, that history that you have and, and the fight that you've done for, for your community and your family. And, and finally to, you know, my dear friend, when we were young Democrats, you know, before kids, before marriage and being young staffers, what a pleasure it is to have a full circle, to be working together again, but on this dais. And finally, all to my, all my colleagues here, you know, today brings a lot of hope and optimism and excitement to, to see what lies ahead. Thank you all for your time here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a good night indeed. Some of you know that I actually had a little countdown app on my phone for a couple of weeks. Nothing against my former colleagues, I see you, Senator, but we were so excited, we were just so excited to see a new council come in that's younger, that has more women, and this night is just really, really, just a good moment. I'm really looking forward to celebrating with you all later. To Councilmember Jennings, you have become one of my favorite people. And I think even though you did not mention some of our names in your speech as people you liked working with, that just means that I have to bake you even more pecan pie bars and make you even golf a little bit more with you, but I really enjoyed learning from you and seeing how you work. You lift up the people around you. It's not just about what you think, it's about the team. And, and that really is everything you do. And I've learned to really respect and appreciate that about you. And I'm really looking forward to spending these next few years continuing to build that with you. To Ms. Maple, you know, I've known Katie for a while, but I didn't really get to know you until the pandemic struck. And I remember we were so freaked out, we didn't know what was going on, we didn't know yet about masks, about transmission, about what was happening. And this woman was driving around in her car to all of our doorsteps, picking up food donations, sleeping bags, water bottles. I mean, we didn't have this stuff in the store, so she's like, does anybody have jugs of water, bottles of water? Because she was trying to serve the people on the streets who had been cut off from any support, from any resources so abruptly. And I learned so much about you, watching you work in those days and just learned to admire so much about you. And you've held consistent to those values throughout your campaign. And I'm just really looking forward to the opportunity to serve with you on this dais. To Ms. Talamontes, you know, we, my colleague Maya likes to talk about heart and hustle and we've all got that, but I think you, there's, there is something you put in your Wheaties in the morning. I don't know what it is, but like every time I've been around you, I mean, you exude energy and you, and you walked so much and you were in the community so much. I mean, everybody campaigned so hard, but I felt like every day I would log on to social media and there'd be a selfie of Karina out on some street somewhere, like by herself, just walking doors, walking doors. Look at this person I met, look at this thing I did. And I know that's gonna embody how you represent District Three, the new District Three. And I'm known at Atomas is so excited and lucky to have you. And I'm really looking forward to having you as my seatmate here and doing lots of good things together. Oh, and to Lisa, our relationship is newer, but I learned something new about you every day that I really appreciate. And tonight was no exception. That speech you just gave was beautiful. And what I really liked about what you said was talking about gratitude. Because I remember the first day I started doing work around the Capitol, the staffer said, you know, never forget how lucky you are to be in this place. And it wasn't meant to be a condemnation, it was like literally every single day you walk through these doors, remember how lucky you are that we get to do the business for the people, that we have the opportunity and the ability to walk in these doors and make a difference for our communities. And that has stuck with me throughout my career. And I feel that every time I'm in this building, even on the hard days, even on the long days, there's that moment of like, whoa, I get to do this. And you spoke to that just so eloquently and that just, I was already excited to have you, but I, on this dais, but I think you showed me a little something more about how you see this role. And I just, I'm really excited to be working with you and to continue to build our relationship that has just begun. And to have a female majority for only the second time in the city's history, you know, I think the last time was before Karina was born. So it was the year you were born. Okay, yeah. So we will be doing pictures tonight before we leave of the five of us we will be celebrating tonight. It is a mantle that so many before us carried on their own for so long, Senator Ashby, Heather Farker, so many that came before us that were really the only voice. And it really matters. Just the other night, I was at a board meeting, we were taking photos and someone looked at the photo and said, wait a minute, you're the only woman in that photo. And I'm like, we got a lot of work to do in our region, but this council gives me a lot of hope and you all give me a ton of hope. So I can't wait to see what we accomplish this year and moving forward together. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Where to start after all of this? So, first and foremost, Councilmember Jennings, it's an absolute honor to be here, to serve with you. I'm definitely looking forward and working with you on some projects, which is very dear to both of us. So I'm so happy to have you here as someone that has made me feel very comfortable and approaching and asking and seeing if I'm going in the right direction, simply because of the political experience that you have. And also, you know, I want to congratulate you on the 49ers win this weekend. I know you're a big fan. So, on that, I'm definitely looking forward to working with you as well. But Rick, I, I appreciate your friendship. I appreciate your candidness. I know there's a few times I've called you and I said, I'm thinking this, and with, with a very calm tone, you've explained to me why I shouldn't think that way and I should think about it in a different way. So I, I truly appreciate your leadership. To my new colleagues, I wish I had this whole page of how many years I've worked with you guys and how we were on this on school board and all that. But unfortunately, I'm behind the, I'm coming to, don't worry. Unfortunately, I'm, I'm behind the line here, but I tell you what, I'm so excited and I'm so looking forward to this, I know I'm gonna get in front of the line. So to my colleague, Councilmember Maple, it's an absolute honor to have you here. I know I had the pleasure of meeting you a few months ago, I think it was. And it was simply, I was sitting here with my colleague, Vice Mayor or Senator Ashby, and she literally pulled me, she, she never came to me to talk, she always dragged me this way going, have you reached out to candidate Maple? I said, no, I haven't yet. She said, you should call, page her right, I mean, text her right now, meet with her tomorrow, which I did, literally. Because nobody says no to Senator Ashby. So, and I had the pleasure of, you know, I think we set up like a 30-minute coffee and it ended up being a two and a half hour just conversation about our city and the things that we need. And I walked away from that meeting going, that's who needs to be on that seat. Because you, you are so well-rounded, you have your experience on business, people, what it takes. I'm so excited to be working with you. And your level of common sense of what's good, what's bad. So I, I know we're gonna get, get along, or if we don't, I'll just call Senator Ashby and she'll figure it out. So that much I'm 100% sure about. Well, Ms. Karina, I don't know what to say. I think I've, I've known you already, we, we go back. I am so proud of you as well, because this didn't just, no one just handed you the seat. I know you worked so hard for it, you know? Maybe others would have said, well, you know, I got Vice Mayor Ashby endorsing me, it's locked in. But no, as, as Councilmember Valenzuela alluded to, every time I looked at the Facebook page, you were either on a street, putting up a sign, or, or kind of walking out of a business with your sign under window and taking a picture of it. So I'm very excited. I think some great things are gonna happen, because we have talked and, and I'll be, you know, I'm looking forward to be working with you. Councilmember Kaplan, again, I had the pleasure of meeting you last week, right? Pretty much. But I've been following you. The minute you announced your candidacy, I, I really followed everything and every great thing you've done for your, the school board that you represented. And I knew that if you get elected, we're gonna have an ace that's gonna be sitting up here. So it, it's, it's a total honor working with you. And just to let you know, Senator Ashby, Councilmember Kaplan already sized up how far it is to kick me from under the desk. So we, so I take it you guys had the conversation already? Fantastic, because she literally sized it up and went to get, and I know Karina knows how to unplug this thing. So I'm pretty much safe. So Mayor, for future meetings, I'm pretty sure you and I, we're gonna get along just fine. Because either I'll be, either I say ouch, which means it's the end of the conversation or everything's gonna be unplugged. So again, it's an absolute honor to be here and I'm, I'm, I'm so charged that with, with you guys, we can make some great decisions to make our city what it, what is, what it is right now and what it continues to be. And that is a phenomenal place to live, a safe environment for its residents, a great town to do business in with wonderful people. So congratulations to all of you and I'm definitely ready to roll up my sleeve and start challenging some of the issues before the end of 2023.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So maybe some final words before we take public comment. I mean. Oh, Lisa. What's that?
Oh, she's the newbie.
Okay, yeah, 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 yeah. That's okay. No, 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 no. I, I follow instructions from Mindy, whatever she says I do. So it's all good. I, I just, my colleague Y'all spoke so beautifully, so I, you know, I'll be brief, but just to say several things about, first of all, the fact that it is a majority woman city council. I know that's something that we happily applaud. I, I don't think we should diminish its meaning, because I forget which member said, I now have a seat at the table. Well, now the majority of the city council, the majority of women have a seat at the table. And it means something in terms of the issues that we pay more attention to and, and our focus in terms of understanding all that is going on in our city and the challenges of all people, including women. Councilmember Jennings, I'm just so grateful you chose to run again, man. Because, you know, you could have very easily and with justification said, I could do other things. But your love of public service and your, and the way you consistently define team in everything you do in your life is invaluable to me personally and invaluable to our city. And that you chose to come back, not for me, but for the love of, of this city is a great gift. And so, thank you, man. Look forward to serving another four years with you, or two years. Councilmember Maple, I, we had our meeting last week and I was instantly impressed, instantly impressed with how whip-smart you are and how focused and committed you are. And I know all the jokes about the progressive tilt of the city council, that's not a bad thing. You, let's remember, you both have a heart for the people who need help the most. You're also a small business owner and have been a small business owner. And I think that that combination is going to bring a tremendous value to the city and to the city councils. I can't just, I can't wait to get started. All right? I appreciate it. And Karina Talamontes, you know, we've had the privilege of, of working together, seeing you rise as a, as a county school board member, now as a city council member. And I know Councilmember Vang has, has patented the term heart and hustle, but you certainly can borrow it or take it yourself, because, because, you know, I, I, you've obviously worked with Councilmember, Senator, excuse me, Ashby, who you appropriately described as a mentor. You have a lot of the same qualities. And the number one quality is you are a fighter for the people. And man, that fight is, is everything in terms of the results you want to bring for your constituents and for our city. And I just, I can't wait to work with you. You're gonna be great. And, and Councilmember Kaplan, I have known you for all those years, back when you worked for my dear friend, the late Jenny Oropesa, I remember who I served with in the legislature. And I love many things about your public service. What I'm especially excited about is that you really care, not just about your district, not just about the city, but you care about the governance of the city. And we've talked about that. And that is really, really important. We, we have a unique system here, a wonderful city manager, a wonderful group of departments and charter officers, and a lot of divided authority and a lot of process that we all need to figure out together. Man, I'm looking forward to your help and your guidance about how we continue, continue to work to build a city government that is reflective of, of the people and all that we want to get done. So, welcome to you as well. I just want to give, and it's gonna take literally 120 seconds, my five small pieces of advice that I have learned along the way, because it was only, it's, it's a little nostalgic for me, because I was once in my early 30s, elected to the city council for the first time. Had a mustache, I had a lot of hair, you know? It's one of those things, much, much darker. And, and the years, years go fast. And it's been a great privilege and it continues to be. And to be the mayor of this city with this kind of energy and this kind of intellect and, and this kind of drive, this is a privilege for me. But here is some of what I have learned. There's an old adage in the legislature and at any level of government where they say, don't fall in love with your initiatives or your bills. And the idea is that, you know, it's a hard process and you don't always succeed, et cetera. So you know what I say about that old cliche? I completely and unequivocally reject it. Fall in love with your initiatives and your bills. Fall in love with them, because it's that love of remedying an injustice. It's that love of, of people, it's that love of your neighborhoods and communities that will lead you to good and great things in our city. Number two, which is not inconsistent, but corollary, is always, 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 in this tough business, because it is a tough business, always give your colleagues, your constituents and your critics the benefit of the doubt. Everyone is human. We are human beings, all flawed. We will all have our moments up here and in service together and we will have our, our run-ins, you know? But if you can assume the best, even if something is very frustrating for you, two things will happen. Number one, you'll maintain and improve your relationships with the people you're having trouble with. And secondly, you'll get through the frustration a lot faster and maybe accomplish your goal if you find a way to, to, to get through it. Number three, fight for your district. This is a district form of representation that is important. And, not but, always put the entire city first. And that is a tough one, but it's, but it's possible and it's doable. And though it may seem in conflict, it shouldn't be. Number four, fight for everyone in this city. Fight for everyone in this city, but fight especially hard for the people who don't have enough of a voice. enough of a voice. And there are so many of them. And five, in your most difficult and tired moments, try to make this service a service of joy and meaning. Because this should be fun. We should have some laughs along the way. We do have plenty, by the way. And, you know, do it with a sense of joy. Because the happier you are, the better you will do on behalf of the people that you represent. And so tiny bit of wisdom over 30 years. And we're gonna do great things together in 2023 and beyond. And what a wonderful way to start with an incredible evening like this. Congratulations to everybody. Because we want to ensure that the new members, and maybe apologies to the family members here and the friends, want to make sure that you get a true taste of a service on the council. We do have a number of people that are signed up under public comments for items not on the agenda, as there is an issue that has brought people out tonight. It's not on the agenda, so we can't talk about it or debate it, but we'll hear from the public and then we'll ask the city manager to look into it and report back to us maybe for an agendized item sometime after the first of the year. How many people do we have, Madam Clerk?
I have 11 speakers.
Two minutes apiece? It's, you know what? I urge you all to stay. It's a good lesson in democracy. Here we go. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'll read off a few names. Feel free to line up in the aisle. Versus Bobby Singh Allen, Kim Pachuni Houch, Dawn Torito, Hillary Bagley.
Do I need to check in anywhere? Am I good?
You're good. You might want to wait a moment.
I'm gonna start.
Bobby Singh Allen, go, go.
All right. Well, wow. What a great honor and pleasure to be with all of you this evening. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, dear friend and city council colleagues. I'm the proud mayor of the city of Elk Grove. Such an honor to be here with all of you. Congratulations on your amazing victories. I want to thank our outgoing council member and our new state senator, Angelique Ashby. Our city is so proud of you and your great leadership here. We look forward to partnering with you in the state legislature. We know that you will serve District 8 so proudly and particularly the city of Elk Grove, not to be undone by our Senator Richard Pan, who's done a great job as well. So thank you. I know how hard it is to win elections and I watched you from afar, some more closely than others, of course. And congratulations. I know that you did not take anything for granted. You knocked on those doors, you ran a solid grassroots campaign, and your communities all delivered. So congratulations on your victories. And now is a great time, you know? Elections are about new beginnings and starting over. You're getting to write this blank chapter in your lives. So welcome. My advice as one of the senior members, like Mayor Steinberg, bring those that weren't part of your journey along with you, because there is value in that opposition. That's your learning moment and an ability to grow. But to my dear friend Lisa Kaplan, my sister, I am so grateful that you said yes, that you said yes, because I know it took months to lobby and convince her to run. But tonight is about celebrating all of you. You have a regional partner in me. I look forward to serving with you on the numerous JPAs. And the city of Elk Grove is there with you as well. Yes, you can and yes, you will. So proud of all of you. Congratulations.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Bobby.
Kim Pachuni Houch and then Dawn Tomita.
Kim would like me to go first, if that's all right? Julie Verga?
Please. Any of the rest would like to line up. Following Julie is Kim, then Dawn.
So I do have some, a photo that I'd like to share with all the members tonight.
That's fine.
You can give it to the clerk.
Give it to the clerk and...
Okay.
Then we got two minutes. Thank you.
And I have these that I want to leave for you, not for tonight, but just for fun reading Okay. Hi, I know of a lot of you here. I'm Julie Verga and I'm a lifelong Sacramento resident and native. I come from a long line of business owners and judges and lawyers. And I'm here specifically to talk about Front Street and what we perceive as a severe lack of resources and services. And in particular, I want to talk about this dog that I'm passing out the picture to you. Because what this dog and what's happened to this dog is reflective of an ongoing pervasive problem that we have with Front Street. To tell you the story about this dog, Bella, she was reported to animal control. She was starved, she was dying. It was freezing cold rain. This was just last week and no one ever responded. Finally, neighbors stepped in and were able to get this dog surrendered to them to save her life. And so I'm here because this kind of thing has been going on for the last three years. Most of you have heard from me, but Darrell, I think it's important to talk about love and to talk about benefit of the doubt and fighting for those things that you care about and fighting for those that do not have a voice. Two minutes today will not in any way be able to tell this story. It would take two days. And we've gotten a lot of, you know, support, but we need a lot more. And I'm hopeful with this new council that you will step up and you will really listen to what we have to say and to our side of the story. Because this is an ongoing problem. And again, I want to say this, fight for those who do not have a voice. I hope that with the new people on the council and with all the women on the council, because for whatever reason, I'm not going to answer that question, it seems that it's usually women that care the most about animal welfare. But there's a serious...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
And we ask for you, please, pay attention to it.
Our next speaker is Kim Pachuni, Dawn Tomita, and then Hillary Bagley. Kim? Please line up.
I'm sorry, we just need to go because we want to hear from everyone, but we can't delay here.
Can you name? Hi, I'm Hillary Bagley Franzoea, and I prosecuted cruelty for over 30 years. I believe the laws are being sidestepped at Front Street. I challenged the progressive model being followed and I oppose it due to the risks that pertain to cruelty and breeding. The manager is a disciple of a model that places no emphasis on spay or neuter and it minimizes the importance of spay and neuter. The model is a distraction from day-to-day management. As early as 2014, the originators of these models opined that spay and neuter was not innovative enough. As a result, they do not bolster spay and neuter. The mantra of the model is to release animals any chance possible from the shelter and to discourage animal admission at every turn. They believe shelter admission is a displacement. Animals are being rejected that are unaltered. They discourage admission of unaltered animals and they are releasing unaltered animals without ceasing the opportunity of spay and neuter. They launched this model without any plan for high-volume and low-cost spay and neuter. In lieu of sheltering, they advocate providing free food and vaccinations, community services in lieu of open admission without any emphasis on spay and neuter. They are delusional to not expect bigger litters and more litters. They continue to put the cart before the horse. They have contributed to the problem. Animals continue to breed while they provide services other than spay and neuter. City leaders, you are being overly impressed with live release numbers. It is a false metric when a facility is a managed intake, reduced intake shelter. The manager knows that. Given how saturated the city of Sacramento is with animals, the only live release stat that you should be impressed with is one that reflects spay and neuter. The cat stats are completely disingenuous. They don't even accept adult healthy cats. Reclamations is another huge issue. They are waiving fees.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Kim Pachuni, then Dawn.
Okay, Kim Pachini Houch Care. You might remember that you all gave me a proclamation for my work at the Front Street Animal Shelter, which used to be a beacon of light in the world because of the work that the volunteers and the shelter managers did back in 2016, up until Philip Zimmerman took the helm. You might remember that I spent tens of thousands of dollars to rescue 1,103 animals in 30 days and paid for them. Mayor, you gave me this proclamation and I'm here today to tell you how horrifying I am, how I feel about the status of the shelter. You are not paying attention to what's going on now. You're having a rebellious community where Front Street was a beacon of light in the world. We had international opportunity at the time to show the world how the community rallies around a shelter to save lives. It is not that way anymore and you are a dereliction of duty to not pay attention to this today. I challenge each and every one of you to pay attention to what these people and these volunteers have been witnessing. You're not paying attention if you don't go to the shelter. This is your city, this is your shelter, and it serves millions of people. And every year, the problem is getting worse. We had a great vibe going there. We had synergy, we had fundraising, we had all the great things that made everyone come together, and it's gone. You've got to pay attention. We're not here talking about things that are not real. You know, I donate lots of money to lots of charities and I can tell you that the little independents are saying that they're getting calls from Philip Zimmerman to bring some cats in to make it look good because they don't take cats. So you need to pay attention to what's going on. These people are very genuine in the work that they've done to help protect the animals. They have no voice. Please, take it upon yourself to pay attention to Front Street. It's a slaughterhouse again.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dawn Tomita, then Estella Drake.
Dawn?
Hi, my name is Dawn Tomita and I've been working on this with this group since 2020. And I'm gonna tell you, it's exhausting. You know, there's so many animals out there that need help. And I'm gonna start crying, but you know, I really care about animals. And the thing is that it hurts me to see them suffering. And I have so many people asking me to help, especially cats. And I know Front Street isn't taking cats. And they're telling me and they're texting me and they're like, Dawn, I have this cat, I have these kittens. One of them's dead and they're out here and animal control won't come out. And that kills me. And so I tell them, tell them it's injured. That's the only way you're gonna get them out there to help you. And I know not everybody loves animals. I love animals and it just breaks my heart that I can't help anybody. I foster for the Sacramento SPCA and it's because they do such a great job of trying to find homes for these animals. I mean, they do live feeds, you know? You gotta get them out so you can get more in and that's what they do. They try very hard, even for the ones that have been there for a long time. And, you know, we've talked to Zimmerman about doing that and the thing is always, well, you know, the algorithm and Facebook. But I'm pleading with you guys, things need to change there. I mean, I'm just one person, member of the public, trying to help these other people. I just got a text today, someone needs help. And so, I mean, seriously, you need to take this seriously. Because it's really breaking my heart that all these animals are dying. So please consider it and help us. Thank you.
Next speaker is Estella Drake, then Daniel Adherhal.
My name is Estella Drake and I've been a longtime animal volunteer, as you guys all know me. For the past 11 years with Front Street Animal Shelter, I have hung in there to keep doing what needs to be done during COVID and I understand the issues all our community animal shelters are going through or went through. But enough is enough with the management at Front Street Animal Shelter and especially with the amount of slaughtered animals. You have the stats to review, so please pay attention to what is going on. This needs to stop and no more excuses. Why is Bradshaw now just like what Front Street used to be, which was our city shining star? It went from the pound, remember? Everybody knew it as a pound, to Front Street Animal Shelter, the pride of our state. So the dog, I'm gonna give you guys an example. So the dog or cat is terrified. Wouldn't you be terrified if you were placed in doggy jail with all the barking and freeway noise? The major excuse is kill it. For example, here's a recent story about Rick and Morty, two beautiful dogs to be scheduled to be killed without being given a chance. A rescue evaluated them and it does not match the shelter's evaluation, but on the kill list without trying to get them off death row. Over a year ago, I sent everyone an email to please do a walk around at Front Street Animal Shelter, Bradshaw, SPCA and Elk Grove, so you can wake up to see the difference in the services and especially the condition within each shelter, the pros and the cons. I almost, positive you did not, because you would have stepped up and cleaned up the mess at Front Street yesterday. Not only do I feel for the animals, the staff and the poor conditions of the building, but why are you allowing so many animals to get slaughtered by the current manager?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Daniel Adherhal. Following Daniel is Claudia Cardoza Adherhal.
I really wish you'd let them finish their talk. I'm here right now, Mayor Steinberg and Karina, who I voted for, congratulations. I'm here right now because this is what's going on in our community. We are the ones, we are the vets taking care of the homeless pets on America River Parkway and the homeless animals out there. It's me and my wife, not Front Street. We're the ones out there being medics with them 24/7 out there. We called Front Street on numerous occasions. This poor little animal had maggots coming out of his wounds. We called and they said it'll be five, seven days before they can get out there. We took him to SPCA. SPCA jumped on board and we needed, have a vet, got the animal help and now he's perfectly fine. He's back on recovery, he's doing good. This poor little puppy, broken paws, okay? Right here on America River Parkway, broken paws. Called Front Street again, three to four days, it'll be out there. Never came. Dog suffered for four days. We had, I said, forget this. I took him to Bradshaw and that helped him and got him the help he needed. This poor cat right here died. We couldn't save her, it was too late. We got her over to Bradshaw and it was too late to save her. The animal starved to death on the parkway, it was a feral cat. And the sad part is there was numerous calls to Front Street to come help this cat and get this cat and nobody came. That's the sad part about the whole thing, I don't give at all. This dog, oh, hold on. This dog was hit by a car. Called Front Street again. Karina, you go and pay attention to this. Called Front Street again? Nothing. Three, four days, nothing. Thank God for a net and Bradshaw. They helped, okay? Now, we're tired of it. I'm tired of it. I'm CEO of America River Homes Crew and now I am the CEO of Invisible Pets and Paws Rescue 2 for animals now. We're done with this. We're gonna be taking care of the animals on the parkway and we look together, working together with you guys, Karina, and helping animals out here as a nonprofit because...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Claudia Cardoza Adherhal, then McWorthy.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for allowing me this few minutes. And thank you for the new members. I look forward and working with you. And this is new to me for speaking to the city council. I would like to bring up three different subjects today. And number one will be backyard breeding ordinance. I think that is a major issue that has been disregarded and is going on. If you're a waiter and you get tips, you have to pay taxes on your tips. Okay, so we have people that are breeding animals, not spay and neuter, and selling those animals and they're not paying taxes to the city, the state or the county. So we need to look into that. We need to stop that, nip it in the bud and stop where it starts. Number one. Number two, I would like to get the guidelines and best practices for the ACO and 311 Services Program. Why? Because whatever they say the guidelines is and whatever their practice is do not match. There's insufficient... they say the guidelines is and whatever their practice is do not match. There's insufficient and misleading information, lack of training, and information gets lost. The situation that I'm referring to is with respect to this dog that you have the photo over there, starved to death. Phone calls were made since October 19th. That's two months. That animal should have not stayed there for two months. It's unacceptable. There's no excuses. Two months. In the last two weeks, five calls. So I will not take any excuses coming from 311 or Front Street. I want to see those guidelines. I want to see practices. And number three, I would like to see an independent investigation of Front Street.
Thank you for your comments.
That's all I got to say.
Our next speaker is Mac Worthy, and then we'll go online to Kim Sau.
Good afternoon, panel. You know, we heard a lot tonight, but I've seen this many times. I've seen the city booming, and I've seen the city fall on its face. Where is that now? Nobody said anything about the border. Nobody said anything about the black mold at Elk Grove. Nobody said anything about free enterprise. Nobody said anything about a moratorium on property that the city owns and the taxpayers for churches. You saw the whole church. They don't pay no tax on it. What happened to money? Wake up, people. If you come here to do something, and I know you're not, I'm gonna be here. I'm 81 years old, but I got another good ten. I got a good ten. Every time I feel like it, I'll come down here and let you know. You don't have to lie. Politics is a scum of the earth. You will see that over the next six months coming out of Washington, D.C. Death, bribery, drugs. Look at the drugs coming across the border. Not one person said a word about that tonight. Because you can't do anything. It's the same thing here. You can't move this city. I know when the government owned it. And what this city done with the commercial property, the reason you paying the money, that you're paying on your property tax, your taxes. Why don't they pay money instead of undermining your education base? Because you don't have no leaders. You have representation. Free enterprise. I'm Republican. I came here and told them Donald Trump will be the next president of the United States. It happened. I'm telling you tonight that Donald Trump will get rid of everything that accused against him. Can you all? No, because you don't have that type of representation. The code. I want to know when you had somebody going to China, what would they taking over that and what they bringing back? I want to see that report. Who was the chaperone for those girls? Wake up, people in Sacramento. It gonna get worse, and crime gonna come here soon, the same as in Idaho.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kim Sau, and then Barry Boyd.
Hi. Good evening, city council. This is Kimberly Sau, District Five. I just wanted to congratulate all the new city council members. I hope we can work on affordable housing. That's the main issue I'm concerned about. And welcome, welcome, welcome. Y'all look great up there. So congratulations, and look forward to seeing you live.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Barry Boyd.
Thank you and good evening. And congratulations to all of the new council members that are starting their new terms, term, excuse me. And to that, as all of you stated, that your driving force is or was and is to represent the people. I hope, in fact, by putting a, I'll put a finer point on it, that the people that you speak of or have spoken of is the will of the people, the mass majority, not the special interests, not to be self-serving, not a small populace, but the will of the people to do what is right and to do what is best at the same time for the will of the people. So I look forward to watching all of you make good on the promise and presentation that you've given this evening. Again, congratulations to all.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is call-in user one.
Hello, yes. My name is Lambert Davis Jr., the founder and CEO of To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes. I'm so glad to see a breath of fresh air. I hope that the new members find out who we are. We're based in Del Paso Heights. Del Paso Heights is showing you how an underserved community can make the city look well. Throughout the state, the Grant Football Team just won the state championship last Saturday. It was very difficult, and they got it done. There's a lot of very positive things going on in an underserved community like Del Paso Heights. They need support. I mean, they were talking about how great the football players were, and they couldn't even swim in their own pool this summer, and it was one of the hottest summers. So there's a lot of things that need to be improved. But definitely get acquainted with To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes. We have a following throughout all of your districts, and it's the millennials who are supporting us. And so make sure you remember Del Paso Heights. I'm not just talking about District Two. District Two is one of the most gerrymandered districts in the United States. It has 23 communities. So when money goes into our district, it's split that way, and it's not really even split. So keep an eye on Del Paso Heights. It's our 90th anniversary at Grant High School, and in spite of all the things that they put against us, we still come out on top and make the city and the state look great. So shout out to the Grant High School Pacers and get familiar with To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Shira Lane.
Hi, I'm Shira Lane, founder of Atrium 916, a nonprofit that supports Sacramento Eco-friendly Creatives with economic development programs and solutions to build a circular economy that is equitable, kind, and creative. We support Sacramento-made eco-friendly stuff with our program, sacramento.shop. And I'm just calling to say congratulations to the new council members. I'm really excited to see 2023 with you at the diocese. And congratulations to Senator Ashby. Yeah, I hope we can work on sustainable funding to the creative sector and also building, making Sacramento a more sustainable city. And yeah, together elevate the Creative Vitality Index. So, thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Raoul Huerta is our final speaker.
Yes, good evening. My name is Raoul Huerta. Congratulations to all incoming and returning council members. A special congratulations to Councilmember Talamantes for her election as District Three Representative. As a member of the South Natomas Community and the South Natomas United Neighborhood Association, I look forward to working with you to improve our community. I'm especially looking forward to having meaningful engagement with you and your staff to improve areas of our community that had been historically disenfranchised. Lastly, thank you for reaching out to our Spanish-speaking community and for giving them a voice. Felicidades. Thank you.
Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any other council comments, ideas, and questions? If not, welcome again. A wonderful start. We will be together after the first of the year. Happy holidays. Safe and peaceful and healthy to everyone. We are adjourned.